Good evening and welcome to the February 24th meeting of the Florissant City Council. Would Boy Scout Troop 615 please come to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Right hand salute or hand over heart?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Clerk, please call the roll.
Shildroth.
Here.
Stenit.
Here.
Pagano. Schmidt. Hernandez. Lee. Gribb. Egan. Caputa.
Seeing we have a quorum, I call this meeting to order. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd ask you to please turn off your cell phones if you have one tonight, or to please put it on vibrate. Thank you. Next, we have approval of minutes, our meeting executive minutes of February 10th. Are there any corrections or additions? Mr. Egan moves for approval, second by Ms. Pagano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have a presentation. Mr. Mayor.
Resolution of the mayor and Florissant City Council recognizing Mr. Gary Bellman for 25 years of commitment to the betterment of lives of people with disabilities. Whereas Gary Bellman was a lifelong resident of Florissant, Missouri, married to his wife Karen for over 40 years. Whereas Gary Bellman was a driving force behind Accessible Play Incorporated, serving as president of the organization. Gary also served as chairman of the Florissant Disability Awareness Commission and served on the commission for over 15 years. Whereas Gary hosted the News You Can Use program on the city's cable channel addressing a wide range of information regarding disability issues. Whereas on October 2008, Gary led a small group of Florissant residents to form Accessible Play Incorporated. His passion was to build an accessible playground so all children could play together side by side. Whereas Gary's dream was to offer everyone a little piece of heaven on earth, a place where there is no physical barriers, where children of all abilities could play happily together. Whereas Gary Bellman and the other members of the Disability Awareness Commission were instrumental in starting the Protective Headgear Program for Kids, he worked to research and educate all citizens about the life-saving benefits associated with wearing approved protective headgear while bicycling, skating, skateboarding, or engaged in riding a scooter. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Florissant and the Mayor Council members, would like to honor Mr. Gary Bellman for his 25 years of dedicated to improving the lives of people with disabilities and to the city of Florissant.
You know, it's hard to say in words what Gary meant to those that had challenging lives, especially children. And he was instrumental in making sure that the city was always on the cutting edge of making sure that we were ADA compliant and that we would do above and beyond what was legally necessary so that everybody would have equal access or as equal access as possible to all the good things and all the beautiful things that we have to offer. And he, of course, advocated that we look for a way to provide children with disabilities the ability to have fun and to be fulfilled as any other child would with the Accessible Play program. So Gary Bellman left a legacy that we will carry on, and we just really appreciate him and his contribution to our community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to say something?
Just thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for honoring Gary, for his devotion to the city he grew up in and lived his whole life, 62 years, and for recognizing his commitment to children with disabilities and their families. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have hearing from citizens. You're allowed to speak three minutes of the council tonight. This is not a question and answer session. If you are going to speak to the council tonight, I would please ask you to fill out the card in the box right by the front door there when you walk in. The card I have here now is from Mr. Tim Jones.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tim Jones. I'm from 865 Daniel Boone, Ward 2, Ward 2 candidate. I am up here this evening because we have not had a ward meeting in Ward 2 in several years. Now, all of a sudden, we get this in the mail talking about a taxpayer-funded ward meeting that is taking place a couple weeks before the election, which I think is terrible. And I think shame on you, John Gribb, for doing this. And Keith Shildroth, you being president of this council right now, shame on you for letting this happen. I think this is baloney. Thanks.
Mr. Tom Kickum?
Hello, my name's Tom Kickum, and I live in Ward 6. And I'll tell you why I'm here. Sunday, yesterday at church, 10:30 Mass, Sacred Heart, I'm trying to hear the homily. I can't hear it. Then I realized we had all these young families here with their little children. And I'm thinking, that's wonderful. That is really, really great. It shows that we're working hard to keep this a good community. And, well, a few other things. Let's see. You know, we enjoy the theater, the swimming pool, the ice rink, the golf course, and all these are important amenities that make us such a valuable community. And the reason I'm here is I would like to make sure that all of these keep going. And there's so many of us, in a personal selfish way, that are golfers. See all those old guys over there? Okay, they're my buddies. We play golf. We love it. And you can go to Eagle Springs, you go to the Steamfitters thing. No, we'd rather go to Florissant. And I'm just putting a plug in that I know all you people, I talked to Mr. Stenit on the phone, and he assured me they're gonna keep this thing going good. And I would like to say that it's very important to me. And it's not just to me. I mean, I'm about shot, you know what I mean? But it's very important for our community to keep everything going good. We're not gonna make money always on the theater, or the swimming pool, or the ice rink, or the golf course, but doggone it, let's go Florissant. That's it. All right.
Hi, Mr. Kickum. Next on the agenda is Communications.
Email dated January 26, 2014, from Pamela Lee regarding irresponsible and wasteful government spending. Email dated February 19, 2014, from Pamela Lee regarding Team Trivia Night fundraiser.
Next on the agenda, we have public hearings. Public hearing 14-02-007.
In accordance with Section 405.310 of the Florissant Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, February 24, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to Star United LLC DBA Phillips 66 to allow for the operation of a gas station and convenience store for the property located at 2020 Patterson Road. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Mr. Gary Plose, are you here tonight, sir? Thank you.
Yes, hi. Good evening. My name's Gary Plose, St. Louis County Surveying and Engineering. I'm here representing Star United to get a special use permit for property at 2020 Patterson. Right now, it's a full-service station. That's the station. It's at Patterson and Humes. And we went through planning and zoning. We got two variances. One's for a new canopy, which you can see on C2 of the drawings that we gave you. And that was already approved. And then this time, we, planning and zoning wanted 15 parking spaces. We were able to come up with 14. What we're gonna do, if you look at your architectural plans, A1 through 4, we're gonna remove the three bays that were on the station before that used to change oil and do service in. We're gonna remove those. We're gonna put a door here, and then these will all be windows. And then on the back, we're gonna put a cooler, as you can see on your C3 plan, which... Can I zoom in on that? The site plan with the landscaping and everything that was required by planning and zoning. Also, they wanted us to remove, we had a sign, so we're gonna go with an overhead sign that's also on C2. Remove all ground signs. The signs are just gonna be on the overhead canopy for pricing. Store hours are gonna be from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. Also, what we have done, I forgot to show you that, is Mr. Barnett, city engineer, and Mr. Lum, asked for us to remove the two entrances that are closest to, the closest intersection to Humes and Patterson, and then the one on this side. So we removed those, and we're gonna fill that in with landscaping and parking. So we'll only have two entrances, one here on Humes and one here on Patterson. And no circulation in and out of the shopping center. Any questions?
Mr. Caputa.
Hi, Ms. Plasse. How you been?
Fine, sir. How are you?
Couple things. Can you explain to the city that you're going to make the building actually bigger?
The only part we're gonna make bigger, everything's gonna stay, we're just adding a 12 by 40 to cooler, right here.
Right. You're coming out 12 feet on the east side, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And them coolers are used for soda, beer, whatever you're planning on having in it for a convenience store, correct? Okay. And the parking spaces?
Okay.
Okay, you have 14 of them right now, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you said if we required to have the 15, you can also fit that in, correct?
Yes, we talked to planning and zoning. We could've eliminated these two islands with landscaping and shortened this one down a little bit and picked up one more space. But they thought that they liked the landscaping a little better than parking, so they allowed the 14.
And you also, you had them doors fixed, the way, them double doors, correct? For handicap access?
Correct. The other door's gonna be right here, and it's gonna be all flat. We're gonna level off the parking lot.
And you're also utilizing the existing restrooms that are there?
Correct. There's two restrooms on the side here, and then we're gonna put one inside, two unisex. Inside. You see that on A1 of your drawings. Okay.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. Seeing no one else, before I close this public hearing, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this?
Good evening. My name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Ward 4. And I'd like to know if there's gonna be a liquor license issued for this development for the property owner? Because if there is, I'm highly against it because we already have liquor stores in the area. In fact, there's one right there. It's probably within the distance of violating the liquor, the distance of 200 feet or 500 feet, or whatever it is. And I spoke with the owners of that little building in the parking lot at Patterson Plaza, and they didn't realize that they were gonna be selling liquor there. And I wasn't sure if they were or not. But I would try to get this amended where they cannot sell liquor because we issue a lot of liquor licenses here in Florissant as it is. And like I said, that having that liquor license, if they sell beer and liquor there, then it's gonna hurt the business next to them in Patterson Plaza, and they've been there for six years under this ownership. And I'd like you to consider that, please. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, Mr. Caputa moves to close this public hearing, second by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have old business, second readings, Bill 8970. Mr. Schmidt moves for a second. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance providing for boundary adjustment between St. Louis County and the city of Florissant.
Motion for a third by Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance providing for a boundary adjustment between St. Louis County and the city of Florissant.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Mr. Mayor?
Just for the benefit of the public, I'd like to suggest that perhaps we let Mr. Barrett just kind of explain to the public what we're doing.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules until Mr. Barrett can explain this boundary switch, seconded by Mr. Egan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
Good evening, Council. I'll try to lay this out so the public can see it here. One of these days, I'll get it right. Just very briefly, the Northview High School is the existing high school of the Special School District right next to North County Tech. That is this building right here. That building will be demolished and rebuilt, and as part of the reconstruction plans, the building is gonna be located to the area just to the east. And there's two residential parcels there that the building would be sitting on. Those parcels have been purchased by the Special School District, and they're currently within St. Louis County. The municipal boundary adjustment that we're trying to pursue here would take both of those two parcels right there, both about .9 acres apiece, and bring them into the city of Florissant. St. Louis County's Department of Planning has done their administrative review, and I expect to see the similar ordinance in front of county here in the next week or so. It is simply just trying to consolidate the property lines over there to facilitate the rebuilt school. The school is dated. It has a lot of accessibility issues, so reconstructing the school would be very beneficial for the students there. Cleaning up the lot lines makes it a much simpler process moving forward for any future work on the site. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you.
Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Stenit.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gribb.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Bill 8970 becomes ordinance number 8023. Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8971. Mr. Schmidt moves for a second, seconded by Mr. Gribb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Parsons Oil Company LLC DBA Parsons Convenience Store and Gas Station to allow for the operation of a convenience store and filling station for the property located at 12785 New Halls Ferry Road.
Mr. Schmidt moves for a third, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Parsons Oil Company LLC DBA Parsons Convenience Store and Gas Station to allow for the operation of a convenience store and filling station for the property located at 12785 New Halls Ferry Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Stenit.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gribb.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Bill 8971 becomes ordinance number 8024. Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8973. Mr. Stenit moves for a second, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Monroe Muffler Brake Incorporated DBA Auto Tire to allow for the operation of an automotive service garage for the property located at 530 North Highway 67.
Mr. Stenit moves for a third, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Monroe Muffler Brake Incorporated DBA Auto Tire for the operation of an automotive service garage for the property located at 530 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Stenit.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gribb.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Bill 8973 becomes ordinance number 8025. Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8976. Mr. Egan moves for postponement, seconded by Mr. Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have request. We have a special use transfer in Ward 2, a request to transfer special use permit number 7987 from Young Yu Chen, doing business as China Garden, to Duong China Garden LLC, doing business as China Garden for the operation of a sit-down carryout restaurant located at 2131 Charbonneir Road. It was postponed to this day back on February 10th. Mr. Gribb.
I'm sorry. Oh.
Oh, you did.
Okay, I will do that. Thanks, Mark. Sorry. Mr. Gribb.
Mr. President, this request is a transfer of special use permit. The business itself will remain exactly the same. It's a Chinese restaurant, primarily carryout, and the operation has been going on there for a number of years, and it's just a new owner that's taken over. So I would request that the council approve this request for the Chinese restaurant. Nothing's really changing except the name on the business license. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Gribb. Mr. Gribb moves for the transfer. I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'm making a motion to go back on our agenda to board appointments, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Pagano.
Yes, I would like to reappoint Linda Rose to the Parks and Recreation Commission and thank her for her service over the years.
Mr. Egan moves for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Pagano. Mr. Schmidt.
I move to reappoint Mr. Kent Miller to the Landmark Historic District Commission.
Mr. Caputa seconds it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Mayor?
It's particularly appropriate to make these two appointments tonight because of the recognition we gave to Mr. Bellman earlier, but I'd like to, it's my pleasure to appoint the following two individuals to the Disability Awareness Commission, Joe Franklin, 1730 Debra, and Kerry Kenyon at number 4 of St. Lawrence.
I'll move for approval on both of those, seconded by Mr. Gribb. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then to the senior commission, I'd like to appoint John Jaworski at 2760 Monford.
Mr. Hernandez moves for approval, seconded by Mr. Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next on the agenda, we have bills for first reading, Bill 8975.
Ordinance authorizing transfer of special use permit number 7987 from Jun Yu Chen, DBA China Garden, to Duong China Garden LLC DBA China Garden for the operation of a sit-down carryout restaurant located at 2131 Charbonneir.
Mr. Gribb.
I would like to move for a second reading so that this business can continue on.
Mr. Gribb moves for a second, seconded by Mr. Egan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance authorizing transfer of special use permit number 7987 from Jun Yu Chen, DBA China Garden, to Duong Chen China Garden LLC DBA China Garden for the operation of a sit-down carryout restaurant located at 2131 Charbonneir Road.
Mr. Gribb moves for a third, seconded by Mr. Stenit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Poll the council.
Poll the council, please.
All right. Shildroth.
Yes.
Stenit.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gribb.
Yes.
Egan. Caputa.
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 7987 from Jun Yu Chen, DBA China Garden, to Duong China Garden LLC DBA China Garden for the operation of a sit-down carryout restaurant located at 2131 Charbonneir Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Stenit.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gribb.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Bill 8975 becomes ordinance number 8026. Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8977.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to special use permit number 7065 to Mission Hills Development DBA Premier Auto to allow for the exterior renovations for the property located at 2420 rear North Highway 67.
Ms. Hernandez moves for a second. Seconded by Mr. Egan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to special use permit number 7065 to Mission Hills Development. Development, DBA Premier Auto to allow for the exterior renovations for the property located at 2420 rear North Highway 67.
Ms. Hernandez moves for a third, I'll second that, clerk, poll the council, please.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Stenit?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gribb?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to special use permit number 7065 to Mission Hills Development, DBA Premier Auto to allow for the exterior renovations for the property located at 2420 rear North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Stenit?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gribb?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Bill 8977 becomes ordinance number 8027. Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8978.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Star United LLC, DBA Phillips 66, to allow for the operation of a gas station and convenience store for the property located at 2020 Patterson Road.
Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8979.
Ordinance appropriating the sum of $156,000 from the general revenue fund to account number 0150661000, capital additions for the purchase of various pieces of equipment for the golf course.
Next on the agenda, we have council announcements. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes, I, we had a situation last week where the high winds that it broke three electrical posts on Rockingham Drive where I live on, and I want to thank the mayor for working with the residents there and also getting Amarin to come by, and we had power restored in 30 days, I mean, excuse me, 30 hours. And it was great to turn that around because I've never seen three posts right over the Halls Ferry break like that. So luckily, after 30 hours, we were able to get power back, and the residents across the street were able to get power 10 hours later. But I want to thank the administration and everyone involved, Mr. DeGerrals, for their efforts and appreciate what they did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to announce again that Wards 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 will be having an open house this Saturday at the JFK Community Center. Our compatriots on the other side of the city did one in the, in the fall, and it turned out very well, and we plan to do this together. Mr. Egan is going to be doing the barbecuing, and we're looking forward to a good crowd. Come on up and just say hello and be happy to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, Mr. Egan?
Thank you very much. On March 29th, Saturday night, the Florissant Police Explorers will be hosting their annual trivia night. The Explorer program is a, an outstanding, one of the outstanding programs that our police department has, and it brings youth from the community in and gives them positive outlet for all that youthful energy. March 29th, 2014, at JFK Community Center, if you're interested in getting a table and coming in and playing, contact Andy Harmon at the Police Department, 831-7000. If you're a business owner and you want to donate a prize or sponsor a round or a table, also call Andy Harmon, 831-7000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Egan, Mayor Schneider and Mayor Schneider will have a team in that trivia night, Mayor of Overland and the Mayor of Florissant. It benefits both Explorer Scouts, right? Overland and Florissant. We're very proud of our Explorer Scouts, they're wonderful young men and women who, most of them will pursue careers in law enforcement. Got some news on Walmart, we have had, had, they've been hung up with negotiations with different, other agencies outside of Florissant, and but last Friday, Mr. Lum and Mr. Barrett issued a letter to Walmart telling them that they're, would be able to start processing their building permit. They still have several hoops to jump through, but this is at least their first official word that they're getting started with to finish, finish their paperwork. And we don't have a groundbreaking date yet, but we, we do have an official letter that they can start their, their paperwork process. Dress Barn is coming to Shops Across Keys to fill the vacancy left by Deals. That became official recently, and we were able to put out a news release on February 20th. So we're very happy that this prestigious store is going to be added to the other marquee stores and shops at Cross Keys. And speaking of some of our fine young people, I was able to visit two different schools in the last couple of weeks, and both of them were, we were talking about technology. One group from Hazelwood West are college-bound students in the robotics club, very enthusiastic club that participate in robotics competitions. And three of these, actually four of these individuals are going to go to my alma mater, Missouri S&amp;T. And so it kind of tells you that these kids, kids are technically orientated, they're going to be pursuing degrees in mechanical engineering. Anyway, they had a very, very enthusiastic club, they had three robots of different sizes and abilities on display that day, and I just want to thank Hazelwood West for inviting me to come. Student Tim Stoll invited me, and it was a pleasure meeting all of those young individuals. And then these, I also went over to North County Tech last week, visited at the, at the invitation of Josh Galati, he's a resident of Ward 3, lives close to Councilmember Egan. And he invited us to visit North County Tech. Mr. Egan wasn't able to make it that day, but I saw some very, very bright-eyed, bushy-tailed young men and women. These kids are not interested in going to college, they're interested in getting a job right out of high school. And in fact, they had pictures of students on the wall that are not even 19 years old yet, that are fully employed by companies like Amarin. And they already, they just bought their first Mustang and their first Camaro, and they're not even 19, and they get full employment with benefits right out of North County Tech. What a great resource North County Tech is for not only Florissant, but all of North County. And I'm very, very proud of it, I'm going to start spending more time over there, and I'm going to be preaching the, the great attributes that we're going to get from North County Tech. Now, Carol Mara asked me to make this exciting announcement, that the comment period deadline for the Florissant Community Development Block Grant and the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, these acronyms, and she loves acronyms, CDBG and CAPER, CAPER. The deadline for input on that is Friday, March 7th, and you can get that done just in time for the March 8th Mayor's Ball, which is going to be held in Blackjack at the facility on Parker Road. And it's going to be, so, it's already sold out, so you can't even get a ticket. They sold 502 tickets, and it's going to be the mayors of Blackjack, Ferguson, Florissant, Hazelwood. And next year, I imagine you're going to probably get, get your tickets early, but they're going to cost more, they're probably going to up the price about 25% from this year. But this is going to benefit Valley Industries, this wonderful organization that started here in Florissant, but they moved to an industrial facility real close to Boeing, and they employ men and women with, with disabilities, and it gives them fulfillment in life, gives their families fulfillment, and they just do some wonderful work. They do some very competitive work in the, in the, they compete with the private industry. They do pay these individuals according to their ability to a fully functional person. And I'm just really proud of, if you've ever been to Valley Industries, you'd be just as proud as I am of the great work that they do, and the Mayor's Ball is going to benefit Valley Industries in a big way. And then on March 15th, I'd like to compliment city engineer Tim Barrett, he's very involved in the Sixth Annual Confluence Trash Bash, looking for anyone that wants to help out with this activity, Saturday, March 15th. We're going to, volunteers will come to four locations, and one of them is going to be Bangard Park. They can come at 8:30 a.m., and there'll be a barbecue luncheon to follow, and they're going to do some, some creek cleanup. So I'd like to thank Tim Barrett. If you would like more information on this, contact city engineer Tim Barrett. And that's all I got, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Hernandez.
Yeah, just, just something small to note, I heard sat news today that Mrs. Donna Tebow lost the four-year battle with leukemia. She worked in the seniors' office with Peggy Hogan, which she did a great job helping with all the senior services. She was a backstreet neighbor there and battle kills there where I live, and always very supportive, a great person, and she will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. We have a work session on Thursday, February 27th, here at 7 o'clock at City Hall. Our next meeting is March 10th, here at City Hall. Ms. Pagano moves for adjournment, seconded by Mr. Stenit, all those in favor?